Are mostly ready. Okay. I am going to call this meeting to order. Good evening to an unusual Monday night snowpocalypse school committee meeting. We're excited to be here, and the reason we're here on a Monday night is because a variety of other meetings have gotten canceled or pushed back over the last month, and we wanted to make sure to have this meeting before we have the budget itself presented to us. So it's a very light agenda with really one item, one to two items, I guess. So let's start with the calendar, which is as usual full. I will just note one thing, which is apparently at one point there had been a devotion forum scheduled for this coming Friday, but that is no longer...
It wasn't Monday. It was Monday, March 2nd.
Oh, it was supposed to be March 2nd, okay, but that's canceled also.
And actually, that, just to...
Yeah?
Huh? Sorry. The devotion parents who write up the meetings, we're going to put that out to the devotion community, too.
Okay, great.
So that they would all know.
Terrific.
And I'm sure there'll be, you know, other places.
Okay, but there are a couple things I do want to call people's attention to. First is on March 2nd and the BHS auditorium, the high school concept study discussion with the public. Do we know if BIG is going to be there? I don't know if we've asked.
I believe we have.
We have asked, okay. And then a variety of open forums at each building, which each of the parent leader groups is helping us distribute information on, I would assume. This coming Thursday, the Understanding Brookline Report on Poverty should be a very good event, and I hope everyone can come. On the 28th is the Pan Asian Lunar New Year Celebration, which is a terrific event every single year. My kids love it. Grownups like it, too, but it's also a really terrific kid event in the MLK Room, Teen Center Gala, Steps to Success fundraising event at the end of April, at Dexter Southfield this year, as opposed to Jerry Remy's where it typically is. Ms. Stott?
Right.
Addition?
No, I'm just curious about whether the, obviously, the budget open forum on March 17th is at the big studio, so that'll be recorded and televised or just recorded for later?
Thank you for asking. Televised live. We're setting, Mrs. McHugh's actually working on all of this with Chrissy Janikowski. So televised live, opportunity for people to call in with questions, email in questions, tweet in questions.
Can they tweet questions?
We can tweet in, really.
Absolutely, and room for a studio audience of up to 40 people.
And BIG is going to be coordinating the intake of all of the questions?
They are. They're working with us around all of those things.
Fantastic.
Yes, we're trying this out.
And on March 25th, are we also going to have BIG at Baker? Or...
They'll actually do all of these.
They'll do all, the parent forums as well?
They record, they've done all the forums. They're up on their YouTube channel. We generally link them on the website and on Twitter, and so they're all there, but they will definitely do the budget forums in addition to the superintendent forums, which is why I'm fairly certain they'll be there Monday night.
And we may want to make sure that there's a link. I know that the town has something on the town website that's called Override Central.
They do.
And it would be great if, because people are going to be interested in the budget in large part because of the override discussion, if Override Central could also have the dates of these budget forums. I don't know whether we coordinate that with the town, but it would be terrific.
So Sean had kept up that site, and that's why I assume it's Melissa at this point.
Okay.
Can we just shoot a note to Melissa and let her know and ask her to put these up to the calendar of budget forums up on that site?
Thank you.
Now, is this going to be covered in the New York Times, Dr. Lupini?
Probably.
Okay, just checking. Well, I mean, the survey was.
Yes, I'm worried about how many responses we receive from New York Times readers.
I sent it out to the entire school committee, which apparently some people read and others don't.
Madam Chair, I have been looking at first class for the last several days.
Some of you have been off-gallivanting in fun-warm places and have not been reading my emails and did not see the fact that the superintendent's survey, he's trying awfully interesting shades of pink right now.
It was picked up in the...
For those of you who are listening along. Yes, there was actually a link, no only was the survey mentioned in an op-ed, but there was a link to it on the online version. So if you click on the link on the New York Times website, you actually got to fill out the survey, which is kind of exciting for people all over the globe, potentially, to be weighing in.
Suddenly, our response rate went way up, right?
I just feel like technology-enabled decision-making takes on a whole new, when the whole world literally can weigh in on our snow day.
Is that enabled or disabled?
It's a fine line, isn't it? Any other additions back to our docket?
Just one more thing about that.
Four o'clock went down, that's right.
Yes, but this was yesterday. There was at least 24 to 36 hours where it was up.
There was another piece in the New York Times talking about how horrible it was in Boston with all the snow. And I thought it was an interesting contrast because the one about the snow days and so forth had a much more upbeat feel to it, although clearly staying home for that many snow days wasn't always so upbeat.
Yeah.
But it was an interesting contrast.
It was, and the income levels was different as well. All right, anybody else have an addition to the calendar? Okay. Consent agenda, we have a past record. Do I have a motion? Mr. Chang, seconded by Ms. Chalobski, all those in favor. Thank you. Okay, subcommittee reports. Mr. Chang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Finance actually just met at 5:00, and we had a chance to preview Dr. Lupini's 2016 budget message, which we will hear in its entirety again later on tonight. That's it. And our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for March 3rd, maybe.
We're working towards that.
We're working towards that. The actual one that's scheduled is what, the 5th?
It's March 6th.
6th.
At 8:30, which isn't as helpful as it might have been when we first scheduled it.
So is that canceled?
Yes, I don't see anybody wishing to talk about the exact same thing again the next morning. Okay, so we're working towards March 3rd, but we'll wait for a confirmation from Robin. Okay, capital improvements. Mr. Pollak?
The capital improvement subcommittee has not met and is scheduled to meet two weeks from tomorrow, on the 10th, but we do have a lot of activities. The devotion school building committee has been meeting, has had meetings of both its two advisory committees, the building advisory and the site advisory, and then the actual devotion school building committee also met, so we can report on that. And then, I'm not sure, maybe we could, I don't know if Mr. Rowe wants to fill us in on any building-related things as well, but Ms. Cox, would you like to report on the devotion school building committee?
Sure. As you have mentioned, the two subcommittees of the devotion building committee met last week, as well as the full committee, on Thursday, and these meetings have been scheduled really in preparation of submitting documents to the state, to the Mass School Building Authority. We need to submit our floor plans for the school, and those had been pretty well settled. So a lot of the conversation at the subcommittees last week was really around some changes that had been made. In terms of the architectural review committee, I think largely the discussion came to developing a list of items that might be looked at for future value engineering, always trying to keep in mind what the costs of the project are and how to contain those costs, but that's really going to be more a factor in the next phase of the project, which will be design and development. The second piece was, there are conversations with the fire chief about, some changes were made in terms of access and complying with new codes and regulations, and so the architects and the school department are in conversation with the fire chief to make sure that whatever we develop is going to work for the student's safety. And on Thursday, the full committee met and voted to approve the schematic design, and that will be going to some estimators, and hopefully we will hear sometime in March what the projected costs will be.
Ms. Rowe, any updates on the studies that are going on? You had a bid opening?
Yeah, actually, the two bid openings, one on office and classroom space, we opened last Thursday, and we had some submissions from vendors. We'll be having a process for reviewing those, and if we believe the space would be valuable, negotiating and working on an agreement for those sites that could give us some opportunity. We're hopeful, in a couple of cases, that the space from its location, we could work something out at a cost that could work for us, but that remains to be seen.
And in relation to which needs and multiple...
It's really multiple needs, but primarily we were looking was for space for Pierce School, so we did have a couple of submissions from the Brookline Village area that had potential, so we'll be working on that. The other piece of that space was to look to see whether we could find a space for devotion school for the K through 4 students who would otherwise be left on campus during construction. We have one option that we're looking at, and it will really depend on the outcome of a negotiation as to whether it's both feasible from price and from the facility that's proposed. I mean, there are a number of issues that would need to be worked at.
Thank you. And then you said the...
And then the second one is, next week, we will have submissions for portable classrooms for Baker School. I believe that the building commission issued, the building department just issued today an additional addendum for clarifying some issues with vendors based on their questions, and extended the deadline a week into next week so that we could get, I think, more focus, and they had a clear understanding of exactly what we're looking for, because our goal would be to try and get that space installed and ready for the fall.
Thank you.
Can I just add a piece to the first item that you talked about, Mr. Rowe? Which is that there's actually a third item that we were looking at, and that's the potential for additional office space, those aspects. So there's both Pierce, there's office space, and there's devotion. I mean, I just want to, I want everyone to be particularly sensitive, and in particular, people in the devotion community, to be sensitive to where we stand with looking for space. So we have an option that we're looking at, and now we're in a phase where that has to be evaluated and where we have to negotiate. And so that becomes a particularly difficult time, right? The great thing about working in a public school district is that what we do is public, and the difficult thing at times like this is that what we do is public, right? And so we're negotiating with someone who understands a lot about our needs and whatever, and so we're in a particularly difficult time in that regard. And I know parents want an answer. They want to know, is K to 4 going to be in this building, and does that mean you're going to do this, this, this? Or are we going to be somewhere else, and can we begin to plan toward that? We are attempting to do that as quickly as we can. We're attempting to do that as financially responsible as we can in this negotiating environment. And so in the next two or three weeks, I think I said in the report here, we hope to be able to come back and give you an update and let you know where we are with that and whether we really have something that's feasible for us to be looking at here. Thanks, Mr. Rowe.
Good, okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Curriculum. Ms. Chalobski.
So we have not met since our last meeting, the curriculum subcommittee. The February 25th meeting was canceled, I think everybody knew that, and we're looking, Dr. Fisher, Mueller, and myself are meeting tomorrow morning, to try and find a date, hopefully sometime during the week of the 9th, to continue the conversation on ECS, and then eventually bring it here to the school committee. So we're sort of working backwards from which school committee meeting, and so it's a process. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, government relations. Ms. Stott?
I have nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Policy review, Ms. Cox.
The policy subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, March 9th, at 8:30. We'll be looking at the public comment that we received in reaction to the discipline draft. We'll be working, starting work on student attendance policy, and we'll be revisiting for some minor tweaking, student admissions policy, based on experience with registering students last year, some suggestions for improving that policy, small. So I hope you'll join us.
Thank you. Any other liaisons, updates? There are a couple items on the calendar from partner organizations and their events. Anything else? All right, public comment. No one has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to make public comment? All right, seeing none. The superintendent's report. Dr. Lupini?
Thank you. As I said to principals this afternoon, welcome to the reboot of the 2014-2015 school year. It feels like we lost an entire month, and we're back. I do want to say on that item, though, before I go any further, just to thank Jay Paliurlo, Charlie Simmons, the building department, DPW again, for all of the work that they've done to make sure our buildings were ready. I heard a number of stories from colleagues about situations they encountered with respect to their buildings and roofs and those kinds of things in trying to get back here today. Some of them were not able to open today, and we were, I know Jay and Charlie and others were busy yesterday at a couple of our schools with problems that we encountered, but did a great job in terms of getting us open today, and I want to thank them for that because of the terrific work they did, we were able to have students come back today. With respect to our school calendar and the survey that was mentioned earlier, last I looked this afternoon, we had over 4,000 responses to the survey, and this, pardon? I don't know if they were from Brookline. I know right now, because without Ms. Stott here to sort of analyze the responses for me, I know I had over 4,000 responses. We, as you know, have had six days and are now scheduled to conclude on June 26th. We asked people if we should look at some alternative strategies if we encounter additional snow days. We mentioned the use of Good Friday, shortening or eliminating the April vacation, and scheduling school for a few Saturdays among the options that we gave to people. We also asked whether we should look at strategies to move the end of the school year earlier than the 26th by using some of these strategies. I can tell you that we'll be taking a look at the results this week when Ms. Stott's back. It's clear that respondents favored the use of Good Friday as a school day if necessary. Those completing the survey overwhelmingly also supported the idea of using the identified strategies to end the school year before June 26th if possible. So I hope to take a look at what I have in front of me, speak with Dr. Wender Schubow about any issues we may need to discuss, and come back to you on the 5th or the 12th, probably the 5th, with some ideas about how we might go forward. You know, my inclination here is that it sounds good to talk about ending before the 26th and use these strategies until you actually make a proposal to do so. So, for example, if I were to come to the school committee and say, "All you have to do to get back to the 19th and get out of the week of the 22nd is add two Saturdays, take two days off of April vacation, and do Good Friday, and you're there," my sense is I wouldn't get the same, I think it's around 70% positive response that we got to the more general question on the survey. So that's one issue. One issue that I spoke to principals about today that I want to make sure I point out for people who pay attention to us and our meetings is this issue in eighth-grade graduations. Principals will tell parents beginning tomorrow that eighth-grade graduations will not occur before the 22nd of June. That will be the earliest that eighth-grade graduations could possibly occur. They cannot, they will not occur earlier, and they may occur later, depending on what kind of weather-related cancellations we encounter between now and then. And we want to let people know that now, early, so that they know and plan accordingly for that week, which can sometimes be used as a week for camps and things like that. The other thing that principals will be talking with their staff about and communicating to parents is to assure them that we value the 180 days and that we will utilize the 180 days for instruction, for teaching and learning. And that, principals will spell out some particular things in terms of field trips, in terms of movies, those kinds of things, and steps we will be taking to make sure that right up until June 26th, that we're providing a valuable experience for all of our students who are here. So they'll be doing that, I'll be doing that as well over the coming weeks. Kindergarten registration, that includes, by the way, that includes, by the way, when finals will be scheduled at the high school, which they will go into the week of the 22nd this year. And I understand Ms. Holman's already communicated that to staff and students. Kindergarten registration, first round, initial round will be done by the 26th. We have one scheduled for tomorrow, three others scheduled for the 26th. That will complete two days at each school, but as I said to you before, I'm not putting a whole lot of validity in the numbers that I'll have in the first week of March in comparing them to our normal numbers and trying to draw any conclusions from that, because this has been a very different year. I actually believe it will be the end of March until we're able to begin to draw any sort of analogies to prior-year numbers. And the other item I already had a chance to comment on, so that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the superintendent? Please go right, I have to go left, too. Ms. Stott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I had gotten an inquiry earlier this month from a parent who was interested in exercising the open enrollment option for kindergarten placement, and I was just curious whether we track those requests as well in comparison with other years. I thought it would be interesting, given all of the pressures on the schools, whether or not we were seeing more parents asking for different enrollment options.
Open enrollment, meaning I reside in a particular attendance area, and I'd like to attend, have my child attend school in a different attendance area. We do track those. I've not seen an increase, I mean, just anecdotally, without the numbers in front of me, I've not seen an increase in those numbers over the last two years, but we do track them. The reasoning continues to be the same. It largely falls into an older sibling who may be at a particular building because of a special program, or the language issue have been the two main reasons for those types of requests.
So all joking aside about the survey, I do think that it's helpful to understand if the New York Times had a distorting effect. So maybe she can show us what it looked like before, or show you what it looked like before that went live and after, and I'm hoping it did not have a distorted effect, but just...
So it did not. I actually have a link to results, and I'm able to look at them real time. When I saw that email, I did check. I checked them, I checked a lot over the last few days, I know. And I don't believe that it did.
Okay. And I mean, just so that anyone who's listening knows, I mean, we also spent time talking about who fills out surveys, who doesn't fill out surveys, certain families who may have language barriers or other technology barriers, or just other barriers to filling out surveys, and just how do we make sure we're sampling? So is it worth just spending a second?
Sure, in this case, we, you know, again, we're, as we talked about during the Coordinated Program Review Discussion, we're not actually set up to do translation as nimbly as I'd like us to be able to do that. So we reached out to some families through Mindy Palo, Cory reached out through, Cory Stott, our Director of Research and Accountability, through Mindy Palo to make sure that we got some sampling. She did tell me that there were some other indications of people who clearly filled out the survey. It was an easy enough one to do, but it's one of the things you'll see in some of our budget recommendations to transition to my next presentation, in terms of being able to do that more quickly.
Yeah, and just to state the obvious, I mean, certainly, low-income families might have a different set of preferences on what to do under these circumstances than other families, instead of just making sure that all families, we're hearing from all families that we have. I mean, the only other thing I would say about Good Friday is that while it doesn't affect me, certainly it's a religious holiday for certain people, and so it's just worth noting that we're not doing that without forethought, that we understand that that's an important time for families, we understand it's an important time for religious reasons for some...
So when we've done this, the one time that we've done this, around the Runkel Project, we, Vanessa Beauchamp actually did a lot of great work with her community in looking at this issue and how we might implement it. We actually implemented an early release day to utilize that day. We had, I think because of that, because we paid attention to what our parents were telling us, our students were telling us, we had great attendance, and that worked. We'll have to look at that and whether we utilize a similar strategy.
We're just ensuring that no student is disadvantaged, obviously.
Right. Oh, well, that's clearly, but that's clearly the case. It falls under our homework policy guidelines regardless.
Right, okay.
And one other thing, so one thing, Cory's away these few days, did a great job just getting this out there immediately for me. Most people, what she told me in terms of comments anecdotally, is that most people commented on our longer-term practices, right? They said, "I know this isn't helpful to you this year, but you need to start before Labor Day," right? You need to get days in when you can get days in. And I will say to you, as a committee, there were a number of comments, I don't know how many, I'll know better once we're able to sit down and really look at the survey, people saying, "If it isn't time in Massachusetts to have a long, hard conversation about these two vacations, these two vacations, and moving to some other model, then we're really missing an opportunity here." So those, she told me, those were the two predominant comments of, "Start before Labor Day, we're doing it. Next year, we move to a calendar." I said to principals, "Whenever you get asked that question, whenever that's pointed out to you, show people next year's calendar. Show them what we now have in place through the collective bargaining agreement," right? And really, when are we going to have a long conversation about, or a difficult conversation about two vacations? I'll leave that one to you.
Well, the thing about two vacations, obviously, is that because each of the two vacation weeks have a holiday in them, you only net three days, because you would take a four, each of those are by themselves 40 weeks. So if you changed to the two weeks that we have into one week in March, you would still have those two holidays, so you only net three days. You don't net five days, right?
That's if you make that, if you make the March assumption, that's true.
Oh, if you change it to one of the two.
If you make the assumption of one of the two...
Right, right, right. That's right, but just, that's exactly right. You would net four if you made it one of the two.
That's right.
You'd net three if you made it in March.
That's correct.
So you, just the payoff is different, yeah? We're not having this conversation now, but maybe we are.
We're not having this conversation now, but just as an aside, at one point, way back when I first started, I thought the same thing, it made sense to have one vacation, especially when we had kids taking trips. Actually, then I was talking about two weeks, about two weeks in March, so the kids could, you know, from the high school could do their trips and not take time off for school.
Now you're negative.
I know, that's true. The other side of it is, I don't think we can have this conversation until the state has the conversation, because so many people are affected by what other systems do.
That's a very interesting assumption, and I'm not sure if that's right, Helen, because I do think that it's also, I've also heard as many people say the other thing, which is that they would far rather be traveling on a time when everybody else isn't traveling so that you have lower airfares, you have all sorts of things.
No, that's true, but if you have teachers who have kids and other systems...
I understand. I've heard, I've heard all sorts of things.
Okay.
Yeah, can I just say, you know, having worked for a number of years in a state that doesn't, has one vacation and doesn't designate when the week is, so it's all over the place. It was not until I came to Massachusetts that I heard that point. I mean, we lived in a district that had different vacations from the district that my wife and I worked in, our kids were young then, but people figure it out. I worked in, our kids were young then, but people figure it out if they need to, they figure it out. And we also started the third week of August, but that's a whole other issue.
Ms. Catta.
So if you eliminate February vacation, for example, think of how often we have snow days during that week. So you gain, you know, you now have added three extra days. You could have three snow days during that week.
And wipe out the value right there. Excellent point.
Wipe out the value.
I'll take my chances.
And how did the idea of extra hours do, adding extra hours, in that conversation, as opposed to days? Just out of curiosity.
Well, I sent to you, to the State House service, I think...
Yeah, but in your survey.
I meant in the survey, but either way.
Oh, oh, sorry. So in the survey, ranked about equal with taking days from April vacation.
Okay.
In second place, if you will. But the commissioner, the commissioner has steadfastly stuck to his position that we will only look at that for school districts that have exhausted everything that is available to them, which means April vacation. So take your April vacation, and then we can have a conversation about adding time. Take your April vacation, take Good Friday, and then we can have a conversation about adding time to the day as a strategy to make up snow days. That's his position, has been from the day he started in this job, and continued to be as recently, did I send it to you last week? As last week. So...
So exciting. It's just an endless fountain of, those angels dancing, exactly, exactly, angels dancing on the head of a pin. All right, we will move on. Any other questions on anything other than snow days? Okay. So, we are now on the Superintendent's FY16 Budget Message Preview, recognizing that we will get the budget on March 5th. This is our preview to get a sense of the issues involved in constructing that budget.
As Ms. Tidkoff said, our presentation of the FY16 Superintendent's Message and the full budget will occur on March the 5th. We may have timed it just so that we have House One right around that time, and we can talk about which assumptions that we made are no longer the case. So let me walk you through, essentially, I'm going to walk you through two models tonight, the two models that we've been charged with creating. A model that assumes no additional funding from an override, no additional funding from non-tax revenue proposals, and a model that assumes adoption of the question that the selectmen have now authorized for the ballot in May. So, what are the assumptions in these models? Well, the no override model assumes 3.25 million from the Town-School Partnership for FY 2016. It assumes an additional 682,000 from Town-School Partnership created through municipal budget cuts. And I want to be really clear here, there was a letter in the tab last week that said we need to talk about that as if it's an assumption, the selectmen, the town administrator don't create that level of reduction, it could be more, could be less, that's correct. But we've used the assumption that was built into the town administrator's budget proposal of a reduction of 682,000 in municipal budget line items that adds to, the money that then is provided to the school budget, making, I believe, that number about 3.93 million that we have to work with in no override scenario. The override scenario assumes the same Town-School Partnership numbers. It also assumes 7.7 million from an operating override, approximately 6.2 of which would be available for FY16. These are numbers that we worked closely with Mr. Cronin on before his departure. And there is an assumption of an additional 2.2 million in non-tax revenues to be implemented beginning in FY17. As I said in our finance meeting prior to this meeting, remember that some portion of that 2.2 million is us. They are revenues generated in the school department through increases in rental income and like kinds of items. The note at the bottom is very, very important and part of what I think can change on us, or that we'll have to follow closely throughout this spring, that is that both proposals are built on revenue and cost assumptions that reflect models that are based on historical and projected data. Two areas that we're paying close attention to, one is health insurance, where the Town-School Partnership assumption was a 4% increase. We know from what we're reading about the GIC that the chances are that that's going to be higher than that 4% this year. What that means to both this year and future years is yet to be written, at $225,000 per point in terms of additional costs, we'll have to deal with that. In terms of revenue, there were certain assumptions made about unrestricted general government aid, there were certain assumptions made about Chapter 70, and it will be throughout the spring, certainly when we see the budget that comes from the governor and what the legislature does with that, that we'll know how close those numbers are to being reality. So the timeline is that on March 5th, we present the budget message and the full budget. On March 12th, we look at refinements, because goodness knows, we'll have changes, probably Addendum 1 about that time for you, in terms of changes to that model. On the 26th, there's a public hearing on the budget, you're slated to have a public hearing. On the 9th, the school committee votes on the FY16 proposals. On May 5th, the town election occurs, there's a vote on that override question. And on May 26th, town meeting begins. That's the big, broad timeline for our budget. So, let me walk you through these, some general, some specific items about these two proposals. The first is the no override budget, which again assumes those Town-School Partnership revenues and nothing beyond that. So this does not presume any additional funding from an override from non-tax revenues to be allocated during the three-year period. One thing I'll say later on with a bullet in this presentation is, that leads us to a discussion with you on the 5th about what some of those reductions will look like in FY16, excuse me, in FY17. So, we will propose very specifically items that need to be reduced, over a million dollars in reductions in FY16. And then we'll talk with you about what we believe that means, headline being about another 1.3 million dollars in reductions in FY17, and what that looks like. Town-School Partnership assumes 682,000, $2,000 reduction to town budgets with those dollars provided to the schools. We assume that the $800,000 that we have in reserves at the end of this year will need to be utilized at least, across at least three years. So you will see in our proposals, that we've proposed using 300,000, 250,000, 250,000 to use the $800,000 in reserves over the three years. People say to you, they say publicly all the time, they always have money in reserves. Well, the truth of the matter is, over the last number of years, couple of years at the very least, we have had a number that's essentially stayed steady in terms of reserves, even though we've budgeted this year a million dollars. The reason for that is the surplus that we've been able to generate through the great management, in particular in special education costs. So guilty as charged to having worked carefully to make sure that we have reserves to work with, by being careful with our operating budget, so that we can continue to have those monies to bring back to the next year and our budget. And we will attempt to do that again. What I'm saying here is what we actually believe will happen, is that over the three years, we will use up what remains in our reserves. And there's a recognition that a reduction in circuit breaker reimbursement associated with our recent history with respect to programs and placement. So in other words, we're assuming in both budgets that you'll see on the 5th, a $200,000 reduction in circuit breaker, meaning, and that's without the 9C cuts that have been made by the governor. That's just a general, if circuit breaker is funded at this level, we've reduced costs, we've reduced the number of students who qualify for circuit breaker costs at a level where our reimbursement is reduced. And we'll take that formula every time. This budget will need to include additional fees, use of building, athletics, early education, beyond those included in our FY15 budget. Let me pick on one area there. So this year, we implemented for the first time user fees for our buildings associated with a number of our partner organizations, Brookline Music School, Brookline Children's Staff Center, Voices Over Boston, and Extended Days. Okay? We implemented 50% of what we viewed as the full cost this year. Next year, we are to implement 100% of the cost. What I'm saying here is, that won't do it. In a no override scenario, those charges will go beyond what we currently have in place to be implemented next year. In some models that we've run, they double to make budget. So, we have benchmarking data, which we've shown you, we've shown the selectmen, we've shown anyone who'll look at it, quite frankly, benchmarking data on our comparison communities and collective bargaining assumptions, and we will not be recommending in the no override that we use those assumptions in the no override budget. That is, that we will use a lesser figure. Our ability to implement the initial phase of a two-year plan for devotion at OLS will be compromised. So we've done what you've asked us to do in our budgeting over time. We've implemented, in the case of devotion at OLS, a look at this as a four-year journey, not a one-year budget. So in other words, we know that next year, we will move 7th and 8th graders from devotion school to Old Lincoln. We know that the following year, the 5th and 6th graders will join them. We know that depending on what we're able to do in terms of the existing devotion school during the renovation project, those students, 5th through 8th grade, will be there for two years or three years. Okay? We've tried to look at our budget for next year in that way. So while we may only need a half-time guidance counselor at the building next year, but a full-time guidance counselor there when 5th through 8th grade are there, we've tried to plan for that second year, not the first. Because sometimes you can create great budgets that have bad outcomes in terms of the staff that you try to hire. Unfortunately, this no override budget makes us look at this as much more of a one-year endeavor than a two-to-three-to-four-year endeavor. We are not able to implement the full second phase of our technology plan, while the full technology plan includes a focus on teaching and learning tools, on administrative tools that actually generated efficiencies, like registration, the registration software, so parents can go on the line and register their students. A number of those things are compromised and they're left out of the no override budget in our second phase. So we have a number of, we've talked since last October, since October of 2013, when we put forward the original model, we've talked specifically about some proactive student service proposals, RTI-based proposals, to provide regular supports for students outside of special education, as Dr. Schmuckler says often, to make sure that special education is not the only game in town for support for students. And some of those we're unable to do in a no override scenario. Enrollment-related proposals are limited to continuing implementation of the literacy coaching and intervention model. We've talked with you, we've talked with other groups, about the fact that we've had to slow down over the last two years on that literacy model. And we don't believe we can do that any longer if we intend to sustain it and see the benefits of it that other districts have seen, and that we believe we'll see here. And so we've gone full implementation with that, but quite frankly, that's left some other ideas, math specialists and other ideas that you'll see in the override presentation off to the side. And, I was going to say most importantly, but I won't, just as important, this budget demands then that we make $1 million in reductions, in reductions to existing programs that will increase intermediate grade class size, intermediate grades being grades in that four-to-six range, grade four to six. I'll come back to that. Will impact high school offerings, programs, and class size, or all, and/or, so all three. Will reduce professional development and supply budgets, and will eliminate key programs. I don't think it's any secret, we've talked openly here, that over the next two years, given the numbers that we're looking at, that some programs like Tutorial, that programs like ECS, that programs like the Elementary World Language Program are all in that mix in a no override scenario to be lost in one of these two years. What I mean by that first proposal is, as I said, the example I've given to principals and that I gave to you. If today, your child sits in a 3rd grade through 6th grade class, where in the grade level at their school, there are 80 students, and they currently sit in one of four sections, that is a grade level, that is a school, that we will look at for what I'll call a forced consolidation in the FY16 budget. It will require us to create class sizes in the 27, 28 range at some schools. I've said this openly, I'll say it here, yes, this is more likely to impact our larger schools, because those are the places where there are four and five sections, right? There's more room at the margins in those schools. It's more likely to be implemented at a Pierce, at a Baker, at a devotion, than it is at a three-section-per-grade-level school. Given the revenue and growth assumptions detailed the past two years, it's clear that significant reductions would also be necessary in FY17 and 18. Let me do this here, because I'll do this a lot over the next two weeks. So I stood in front of you some number of weeks ago, must have been January, because goodness knows, we were never here in February, so, and I said to you, I walked you through the issues around even talking about Elementary World Language for FY16. And at that time, you may remember that I pointed out to you that the danger in that conversation was that those people have a limited license, and that even by talking about that as a reduction for FY16, we were putting that program in danger even should an override succeed, because of the number of people who might look at other districts where they are starting programs, or have existing programs. Right? So that's how we've looked at that program. We've looked at that program as a second-year component in this budget proposal. I can tell you that the second-year shortfall in a no override scenario is minimally 1.3 million. We know that today. And the reason I say minimally is, again, we've made certain assumptions about health insurance, about state revenues, et cetera. If they're wrong, it's more. And a program like Elementary World Language, which we fund at a level of about 1.1 million, would certainly be a candidate in FY17 and not in FY16, for the reasons I pointed out We've created contingencies for regular education, for enrollment growth, for grants, 9C cuts. We've had a number of 9C cuts, we talked about that at our last meeting, we've had 9C cuts this time, put into place unilaterally by the governor in kindergarten grant, some in early education, in Metco, I believe those are the main areas, oh, and circuit breaker, a small one this time again, in circuit breaker. And either we need to make reductions in some of those programs, some of which we can, some of which we can't, or we need to fund them from the district budget. So we've looked at them in both ways, in terms of contingencies and potential reductions. And we've created contingencies in special education. And I think this last item is a really important one, that I hope we spend some time on in the next two to three weeks. So, with any kind of budget reductions, there are unintended consequences. So with any kind of budget reductions, there are unintended consequences. You start out saying, I think we can reduce the number of sections in those intermediate grades, and then we end up in a conversation about the number of special education referrals and other kinds of referrals and other kinds of services that may be necessary to provide supports for teachers. So we will build, in what we recommend to you, contingencies, additional contingencies, targeted to accommodate the unintended consequences of some of the budget decisions, recommendations that we've built into this no override budget. Why don't I stop there and see if you have questions on the no override scenario?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Lupini. And I apologize in advance, I was late for the finance subcommittee meeting where some of these were discussed, and so I missed the opportunity to ask these questions earlier, so if you will indulge me. So the first thing I was wondering, when you were talking about the devotion, preparation for the devotion, use of devotion, sorry, use of Old Lincoln School for devotion, I had two questions there. One is, is any of what you're presenting here also contingent on passage of the debt exclusion, or are you talking exclusively, when you talk about no override, are you talking exclusively about question one, which is the operating override?
Now, this is operating, and it's all built on an assumption that we will move forward with a devotion project.
And secondly, when you talk about not being, you had something in here about under a no override, or I guess, given that the ballot questions are there, there is going to be an override ballot question, so no override is essentially failure of the override to pass.
Yes.
So for devotion, are you saying that we won't, that in a no override scenario, we're essentially not going to be able to implement the program that Monica Crowley has been describing? Is that what?
No, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is that some of the things that we, and the two best examples I used, one, the guidance position, the other is probably what we've been thinking about administration, the other is the unknowns. So right now, as we discussed earlier, we don't know if devotion K to four will be in the existing building, whether they'll be at another site. There are some pieces that we might do differently that I'm not sure we'll be able to do. So, but no, I wouldn't go as far-
So it's essentially about, you're talking about staffing up the Old Lincoln School-
Yes, I would not go as far as we won't be able to do the program-
Excellent.
-that we've talked about with Monica, I believe we will.
Thank you for that clarification, because I know how invested people are in that. So you said that the $6.6 million will be available in fiscal '16, but it's-
6.2.
6.2, and it's a 7.6 or 7.7, 6.7, 7.6 million dollar-
6.67.
Million, thank you.
Plus the 2.2 in non-tax revenue.
Plus the 2.2. So when you say 6.2 million will be available in fiscal '16, is that because of the phased-in approach that has been suggested?
Yes.
So the override gets phased in as do the revenues for our budgeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I am, if you want to talk more about that, I'd be happy to have Mr. Rowe come up because we would, in terms of the interaction of that and the setting of tax rate, I understand it enough to be dangerous, I'm a little out of my league.
Okay. No, that's good, I was just, I just wanted to make sure that the, sorry?
Do you want to?
Sure. It's just about explaining that the revenues are, fewer revenues are available in fiscal '16 because they're phasing in the override if it passes, right?
The issue is how the additional revenue actually would hit the taxpayer, is essentially the question you're asking. And the way that the plan for the implementation being structured is the, the override itself would be implemented in year one. The capacity that would be the normal, if you will, 2.5% increase would be lowered somewhat in year one in order to leave capacity in '17. So if you think about it, normally, the town pretty much raises its taxing capacity by the 2.5 it's allowed to in the aggregate by law. The override allows, obviously, to go over. And because of the wording, the town is essentially locked into increasing by the amount of the override, that amount in year one. But the town's not required by law to increase the tax by the base 2.5%. So essentially, in order to, because this is a three-year plan, and we don't need all the revenue in year one, what the plan would be would essentially be to lower the increase out of the 2.5% piece, and then that allows flexibility going forward.
Okay.
You capture that back in the second year.
Great, thank you. Oh, and finally, about the reserves. The $800,000 in reserves, because those are one-time funds, once they're gone-
There's a $250,000 cliff when they're-
I'm sorry.
In the, well, actually, in the fourth year, yes.
And meaning that we will have to cut that in order to have any reserves? What is, we have, that will become a cut in that year, right?
Let's be clear on what all this means. So we still have, even with our very positive, because of what we budgeted this year, we have $500,000 in, out of reserves in our current budget, okay? And so even stepping down from 500,000 to 300,000, which is what we're suggesting here, is a $200,000, $200,000 less in available revenue, right? And, but what we've tried to do is create that kind of a step down instead of a $500,000 to three, right, or 800,000 to zero. So we've stepped down over three years as one approach to this.
But you're talking about stepping down to zero, so in year four-
Zero.
-that money has to come out of programs.
Cuts or other revenues, right?
Okay. Thank you, that exhausts my questions.
I find that difficult to believe. Ms. Cox?
I have a question, it might be something that's coming in budget, but on the rental fees. You talked about how in a non-override scenario, we've started to implement that and that could double, but would that be just looking at those groups, or would there also be the idea that that might extend to other groups beyond who it currently applies to?
That's a really good question, I think it would be both. And it's, and I used rental as an example. I mean, we also believe that maybe not in year one, but in years beyond, we're going to have conversations about athletic fees, about the assumptions we've made in early education fees. We've assumed essentially 2% to 3% increases each year, whether that can continue, or we're going to need to look at something beyond that, and all of the unintended consequences, right, of that, the unintended consequences of athletic fees, and of these other fees as well. But it's really all of those, and it's a combination of increasing the fees for those partners beyond what we've already set, and looking at additional fees. I mean, we've, I think we mentioned in one of these early versions of the document, looking at groups like DACEP, right, and other after-school enrichment programs. And when PTOs run DACEP-type activities, would we begin to look at some kind of a fee for the use of rooms for that? All of that would be on the table.
I guess my concern there would be just that we wouldn't know until May, and a lot of those programs start enrolling, I wonder if there would need to be some-
So unfortunately, the problem, you know, the problem with this budget is, the problem. One of the problems with this budget is we have to spend the next two to three months implementing this, right? And also implementing another budget. I'll give you a more positive example, right? So let's talk about the override budget for a second. There are positions in the override budget, and in our discussions, our discussions with principals. You know, people have said, well, you can't implement that on May 5th. Well, of course not. So you use, you do anticipated openings, right? You do all of that, that's what school districts, because of the timing of these kinds of things, that's the strategies that they have to employ, so they have to go through, and so we have to play, creating these budgets is, believe me, is bad enough, right? Actually, starting the initial steps of implementing both of them is worse, because we may have to design fee structures and other strategies that we don't use, and have difficult conversations that, you know, by May 30th, some people would deem as unnecessary. They had to happen.
Just a couple of quick thoughts on the no override before we move on. Additional fees, one of the things that came up frequently during the override study committee conversation was the availability of scholarships. And I think one of the things that would be helpful is, as we look at the different categories of fees, understanding, number one, where scholarships are available, because many of them, there are scholarships available. Number two, even under the current circumstances, to what extent the scholarships are used up, and there are people on wait lists for scholarships. And number three, what an anticipated set of scholarship needs might be if the fee were increased further. So, for example, I think there, it's not well-understood that for BEEP, that there are scholarship requests that are unfulfilled right now.
Right.
And so increasing it past the usual 3%, while that might be attractive for certain revenue purposes, it's not as though there's just scholarship money sitting around waiting for this next group who would be impacted and who would need it, but it doesn't exist for the kids who are there now. So I think understanding some of the impacts on families as we think about these different needs will be important for us, it'll be important for the public to understand, and that might be a place where extended-day partners can help us with their, you know, from their point of view. I think my second more question than comment was, in terms of the impact of the nine C cuts, last time, a week and a half ago, we talked about, it was in the range of $150,000 to $200,000, I think we'd gotten there a variety of different ways, but is it still in that range?
I believe it's higher than that, because Metco alone, I know we heard today, was, just from this nine C cut, is $110,000. So, you want to say a word about some of the others?
Yeah, the two big ones that we felt impacted by were the Metco and the kindergarten grant. And those two together, about, as you say, $170,000. There's also a cut to circuit breaker, which is in the $25,000 to $30,000 range. And we'll just see how that plays out going forward. There could be some other reductions elsewhere in the budget, especially in early childhood, as they affect EEOC that could pass through to our early, our BEEP programs.
The circuit breaker cut, this circuit breaker cut, because there was one in November, this circuit breaker nine C cut was supposed to be purely administrative. We'll see if it plays out that way.
Okay. And so just to explain, can you just explain to people what happens when we have a nine C cut for this fiscal year, the one that we're in, what happens to the base that we then, do we, because I think that's a little bit confusing to people.
So, two things. What happens to the base, I mean, we've already been told, sometimes, sometimes it's been restored somewhat. We've already been told by the governor's office, by DESI, that this is the new base. These are the base. So for Metco and others, the discussion starts here. What happens practically is what happened today, we get notified of a reduction, and we have to submit a revised budget for those programs. So Amy Martin and Susie Toluhtar, just to use Metco as the example, have to go through an exercise of looking at our budget and proposing to us where we will find $110,000. And one of the things I said about that program is, you know, that we've seen so many nine C reductions in Metco that we're at a point now where we are actually into staff, people, teachers in classrooms, Metco-specific staff, and the X number of teachers who we support with that grant as well. That's where we are now. Programs beyond the classroom for students, those fundings are all gone, they've been taken away. And this is the new starting point for the conversation. Do you want to say a word about?
I was just going to say, you know, in, at the high-level terms, what it means is we start off 200,000 essentially worse than where we really thought we were when we did the second quarter report, which is what we're essentially basing all this on. So it's an additional challenge to that extent.
And given that we're halfway through the year, and some amount of that money has been spent, you know, one of the other questions will be, when we think about the reductions and the use of reserves, what reserves we have left for this year that we're in will be impacted?
Right, yes.
So there may not be $800,000.
They could be, they could be affected, yes.
Okay.
Because it's very difficult, as you're, I mean, $110,000 is actually 220.
220, right.
Right? And at this point in the year, it's very difficult to make those kinds of reductions.
And then the last thing I just want to clarify was the, that it's a minimum of an additional 1.3 million for the next fiscal year.
Yes.
Was that?
That goes a step beyond back of the envelope. That's some pretty, traditional of our assumptions in working through some things that we've worked on historically with Mr. Cronin, playing out some costs build on the FY16 proposals, some reasonable assumptions on our part, and we get to a minimum of a $1.3 million reduction. And as I said, you know, just as a start, for comparison's sake, every time I do this, by the way, I get characterized as, you made a proposal to reduce. I'm just giving kind of, you know, an analogy, the Elementary World Language Program is in the $1.1 million range, the enrichment and challenge support program is in the $300,000 to $400,000 range. I mean, that's what things cost. So 1.3 million is a pretty significant chunk to reduce, and that's year two.
That's year two.
That's year two. That's after we've reduced here by about 1.15 million.
Professor Glover?
Thank you. There's two questions about math specialists. In the no override budget or scenario, eliminating math specialists, I was wondering how much that would, that saves on the budget. And then in the override scenario, I was wondering, how much is, how much is it to fully fund math specialists?
Total cost?
Off the top of my head, I would say that the existing math specialist group is in $900,000. And then the add is?
In the override?
Yeah.
I shouldn't say fully fund, but to-
No, I'd say, yeah, I think it's 350-ish.
350 on top of the 900?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
267, in the override? Okay, 267.
That's what this piece of paper says, I'm sure it changes. Ms. Catta?
11FT presently.
When you raise rental fees for extended-day programs, that money probably will be gained by raising parent fees for their children, to pay for their children to be there. And when you raise parent fees, what happens is you increase the number of people asking for scholarships, but there is no more money than there is right now for scholarships. And I'm wondering, two things. First of all, at what point does it become an equity issue for us when what we are doing is forcing, in certain ways, the extended days to have less money for scholarships? And then there are also students that we ask them to service because of IEPs and so forth. And are we expecting them to provide scholarships, or do we kick in for that service?
So the answer to the second question is, yes- So, the answer to the second question is, yes, we're expecting that, and no, we don't. Because they operate programs in our buildings. True, we view them as our partners, but in this particular respect, and Peterville and others have heard me say this time and time again, they are vendors of ours. They're partners, but they also have a service to provide. And that means to all students, and they follow our mission. Right? And so, that's their responsibility. But I want to go back, because that's me getting into the weeds, right? And just say this. I agree with everything you said. And I agree with the comments that were made downstairs about early intervention. You're not going to get me to say that I recommend this. Right? Because you asked a question, when do we get to the point where we've violated this and that? We're there. Already past it. I've said that over and over again for the last six months in front of many, many groups, right? Including the Board of Selectmen. We're past the time to address a number of these issues. But by law, I have to present this budget to you. I have to give you a budget that balances with no additional revenues from any kind of a ballot question that might come before the voters in May. So, what we're trying to do is do that the best we can within the parameters that we've been handed. And it's not a good budget, and it doesn't support many of the beliefs that we have, the beliefs that we've built into our strategic plan, what we believe about these schools and their value in this community. It doesn't honor them.
And it's very important that you keep saying that, because it's so true. It's very frustrating to sit here and realize that we have to make certain kinds of cuts that are not in the best interests of children and families, but we have no choice.
Let's talk about the next one.
Slightly cheerier scenario? Should we dwell on?
Oh, let, no, let's do this, please. So, the override budget, which I said in the first slide, assumes same $3.25 million provided to the schools. It does not assume those reductions on the part of the town. So, that $680,000 is gone. Now, it's replaced by a $7.7 million override, $6.2 million of which is available to us in FY16. Again, we're assuming $800,000 in reserves that will need to be utilized across at least three years. So, same assumption. Same assumption about circuit breaker. Circuit breaker, even without 9C cuts, has been reduced in Brookline. That's a good thing. It says that more Brookline students are benefiting from programs in Brookline. They're less expensive programs, because they're in our district, and that we're getting less reimbursement, even at the same percentage of reimbursement by the state. A very good thing. So, one of the things that we've talked about, and there are some items in here that won't, some people will look at this presentation and say, "Next week, hey, you didn't do that." That's right, that's a preview. Right? So, one of the things that we've looked at is whether we need to fully implement some of these building usage features in year two under an override. So, in the, remember, this year, we've implemented 50% of what we put out there for the long-term budget. So, if we were charging each extended day, I'll make this up $10,000, this year it's $5,000. We've said, and we've tried to take a look at the option to keep that in place in that way through FY17, when the rest of the non-tax revenues go into place. So, something we're playing with, and got some feedback from you on at the finance meeting. The collective bargaining assumptions that we've used in the override budget reflect the data gathered from comparison communities. So, you've seen that, we've shown it to you a number of times, we've shown it to the selectmen. We think it's clear as a guiding document, and we've been able to use those assumptions in this model. And the initial phase of our two-year plan for devotion at OLS would be fully implemented. Meaning, we've not had to make those staffing compromises that we know will be tougher to implement in year one to get to year two. We're able to put the program in place in the way we want in year one. The full second phase of our technology plan, including devices, the applications in terms of content, administrative tools, teaching and learning, things I talked about earlier, that we weren't getting in the no override. Mounted projection, which isn't included at all in the no override, we started on a fairly aggressive mounted projection program two years ago, and we've been able to continue that in this budget. And a part of the staffing recommendations that we will get from our consultants are all fully funded. And by the way, let me just say this about these items that come after this. For the most part, what I'm showing you here is what we showed you in the model in October of 2013. For the most part, this is the model from 2013. This technology plan item for year two is the model that we showed the override study committee in October of 2013, adjusted for what we were able to do last year. Okay? So, there are no surprises here. Special education proposals include more efficient model for assistive technology, extended school year, and home services. We're able to propose, we're very excited about this, actually, that we've been able to propose some slightly different modeling around assistive technology to create a better situation for students who require assistive technology, around our extended school year administration, in particular of our extended school year programs, and home services to actually improve, we think, those offerings. And student service proposals include proactive regular education supports for students outside of special education. Again, as delineated by Dr. Schmuckler in the model that we proposed in October of 2013, and which will spell out in the budget proposal. So, enrollment-related proposals include the advancement of our literacy coaching and intervention model, our math specialist and coach model, our enrichment and challenge support program, that program that you've heard the initial recommendations of the program review committee, we've been able to fund those recommendations in this proposal. Steps to success, we said over the three years, we would be able to add two positions to that program. We've added the first of those positions, just like we said we would do in this proposal. Before and after-school programs, building, maintenance, and many other areas, all is described in our original modeling. The Brookline High School teaching staff continues to meet enrollment-driven needs. We said we would need to add 1.2 teachers because of the number of students who were coming, the slight growth in enrollment. Guess what? The override model has 1.2 teachers. And contingencies identified for regular education, for enrollment growth, for the grants, the 9C cuts, and special education. One thing I will say here, though, since I've touted how closely we are aligned here with the model, is that we're not completely aligned with the model. The model was created in October of 2013. We didn't know about these 9C cuts, our enrollments have outstripped the model since then, and so, we've had to look at some of these areas and make some slight adjustments. We'll continue to discuss other issues that will need to be addressed over the next three years, some of which were not apparent to us when we created the model. The athletic program, and some changes we may need to make there, because you know we've run a shortfall the number of years. And Ms. Dickoff, to your question earlier, this is another area. We increased fees, and our gap widened. Right? Our deficit widened. Why? We really need to take a look at the ability of students to pay, and what the increase in fees did to that ability. Health insurance, and the number of people we're onboarding. Student activities. We have some very exciting proposals, we believe, around the middle grades. Some things already that we think we're figuring out from the work that Monica Crowley's done, that we can take a look at, advisory, other kinds of things at the middle level. Receiving and delivery, which we had a conversation about downstairs, and administration. Let me just focus on receiving and delivery, because I think it's a great example of what we talk about regularly here, in terms of not being able to do business in the same way that we could when this was a district of 5,000 students, now that we're a district closing in on 8,000 students. We had a delivery service that was one person, things were delivered largely to the Spurber Center, that person went there, they were checked in by a coordinator, they delivered them to schools. Great little model for a 5,000-student school district, doesn't work so well when you've added 30 elementary classrooms over the last number of years. It requires a look at the model. Doesn't necessarily require more people. It means you have to look at the model. It means you have to look at whether you need a place for receiving and delivery, how items go out of there. We're having to go through that exercise, and I know you know this. We're having to go through that exercise on a number of things that we do, and how we have to change them to meet the needs of a growing, what is it now, the 14th-largest school district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, next week, yes, it's next week, on the 5th, for finance meeting earlier in the week, you'll have a copy of the superintendent's budget message. Mr. Rowe will be ready to go with the full budget, and we'll spend the evening with you going through these two proposals in very specific items about what we propose that we do in either one of these scenarios. Happy to take any questions on the override model that you may have.
Rebecca.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief for this time. So, first, I just want to say that, as somebody who has been asking about what we could do about our middle school programming for 10 years now, and been told that it's a great question, but needs to wait until there are additional revenues, we've gone through many, many cycles, other priorities, and so, it is tantalizing to believe that we may finally be able to start moving...
Some things, we believe.
On that in particular, if we are fortunate enough to have the community support this override. So, I hope, understanding that this is just a preview and not the actual presentation, I know that the override that's been put on the ballot, the operating override that's been put on the ballot falls short of the projections that you had done. And so, I just hope that we will hear more detail from you, and I'm certain we will, about where that's being felt in the way you've put together this budget. As I said, it's music to my ears to hear that middle school programming might actually start to be addressed. But what are we, what other pets of other school committee members maybe, are we still going to say, "It needs to wait, we need to tread water"? Where are those options? I won't ask you now, but I hope we'll hear more about that.
Sure.
Okay. I mean, clearly, the difference is our start between the override and non-override budget. And so, I think one of the things that will be helpful is, you know, if we think about a summary of what's different. I think there are going to be some places where we won't be able to do enrollment-related increases the way we want to. There'll be some places where programs are reduced or curtailed. There'll be places where we will fall even further behind other districts in terms of equity on things. And so, I think just some sort of one-page summary at the end, or somewhere in the March 5th, just so that people can, at a glance, look at what's different, I think will be helpful. The only other question, and the town administrator's budget presentation did not address this, is what happens if the debt exclusion does not pass? Most of the town administrator's budget presentation last week was focused on if the operating override doesn't pass. And so, I think at some point, it might be helpful to get a clarification from the town administrator. I know Sean addressed this a few times verbally, but I think it'd just be helpful to get a written clarification from the town administrator of what their intention is. Because clearly, the devotion project doesn't just go away. The other things happen in the CIP, and anyway, I think that's just important for people to be very clear on. And so, can we ask Mel for that?
I mean, my understanding, Mr. Rowe, is that, the word I was going to use is that it reduces capacity within the CIP. I'm not sure if the right word isn't eliminates capacity within the CIP.
Right.
Yes, it can get done, and at what cost? Yes.
And I don't know if there are expectations about what it will do to the devotion project, if the devotion project will feel an impact in any way.
I've not heard that.
But anyway, we don't have to, you don't have to guess. But I just, I'm just, right.
The point is, if the debt exclusion doesn't pass, there'll be a huge impact on the town's capital plan.
Right.
That means the town.
Right.
That includes devotion school.
Right.
So, the question is, where does the impact hit, and how?
So, I think it's just worth noting that. And then, I guess the only other piece is, you know, it's helpful to see the, our interpretation of the town administrator's numbers. I'm wondering if we can ask the town administrator for a memo of some sort. Oh, we have, okay. That just details out, here's what the selectmen's proposal was, here's how it works year by year, I mean, to Rebecca's point earlier, of when the taxes go up and when the funds come in, and when different pieces of non-tax revenues get implemented, and that sort of thing. I think it would just be helpful to get a memo, so that when...
Yes, we're doing that.
That we feel like we're doing our fiduciary duty to understand what the base is that we're working from under these different scenarios year by year. Okay. Anything else? All right. We will wait for March 5th with bated breath.
Okay.
So, our next agenda item is update on the superintendent's FY15 goals.
Thank you, Ms. Corrigan. So, what I want to walk you through in the next few minutes is just a few comments about, and we're going to talk specifically about the goals established this year. This is the time where I've been talking with the chair and vice chair about goals. Conversations have focused on areas where I see that we're, that I'm able to meet those goals and areas that have been challenges. And there's probably not going to be anything terribly surprising, but this is an opportunity to sort of begin the conversation with the full committee, continue with the chair and vice chair about, I think, as we talked about at the end of last year, adjustments that may need to be made, or conversations that we may need to have about some of these areas. So, remember that the areas of focus in the evaluation process are a professional practice goal. So, this goal was largely focused on my engagement at school with leaders, teachers, students, and parents. Plan was designed to ensure I have the opportunity to be more present at buildings and with stakeholders. Student learning goal, focused on the enhancement of the educational program throughout the system. Again, focused on making sure we strive for excellence in what is offered to our students, as well as to address persistent opportunity gaps. And then, certain system priorities, which I'll detail here. So, what I've done is really broken this by each of these areas into a few comments on areas of success, and then areas that have been a challenge to date. And then, I'll walk you through these three areas and be happy to answer any questions. So, in the original goals, we talked about regular meetings with senior staff. We've certainly been able to do that, probably more than they'd like the last few weeks, in particular, as we focused on budgets. But just in terms of regular opportunities for problem-solving and efforts within their work, that's a goal we've been able to meet, we meet once a week. Leadership team meets weekly. What we've been able to do that we think is very successful this year is to add on to, we already had two types of meetings in the past, the regular leadership team meetings, which are principals and senior staff, essentially. We incorporated four to six meetings a year where we had an opportunity for elementary principals to meet with coordinators around topics that both Dr. Fisher-Mueller, and sometimes Dr. Schmuckler and others have facilitated. This year, we've, the principals were always looking for a time when they could meet. They've never been able to sustain a model, so we actually built that into the model for this year, so that they could work together around certain areas. Great one would be that in two weeks, they're meeting to talk about the results of the staff and community surveys, and what they may do in terms of press release and the discussions they're going to have with their staff, so they're able to share that conversation among each other. We've incorporated that into the model. I said in here, you know, I plan to sit down after budget season, after May 5th, I plan to sit down with Rick Rogers, Heidi Cook, and some others around just some things that we can incorporate to improve this model. Arrival at schools, believe it or not, other than the last month, I've been able to pretty much sustain that. much sustain that, that goal around being in schools X number of times in a, in a, over a six-week period. I've managed to get out and say, say something to staff members and meet parents and students in the morning, which is a great way to start your day, I have to tell you. Parent forums, we've been able to keep up with that schedule. In fact, thank you so much for, Board of Selectmen School Committee, for an override campaign, because that tends to make sure that a superintendent's dance card gets completely filled up for now through May 5th. So I have a few open forums, as you saw, and the, and some of those are repeats from, huh? Yes, thank you. So that's, that's not, that's not a problem. That part's not a problem. And parent leaders, you know that two years ago, I mean, I met in a model that was, I think, created here by Jim Walsh with parent, with PTO presidents. Two years ago, I had the crazy idea of actually adding school council co-chairs, the parent co-chairs, to that mix. And we've been doing that now into our third year, and it's a, it's a very successful model, I think. There's at least one or two people sitting around the table who've been in those, those meetings. I enjoy it. I think they get a lot out of it and get a lot of information that they can share with their communities out of, out of those meetings. Areas of challenge within this, individual meetings with principals have suffered as a result of, you know, now nearly two years, well, since B-Space began, over two years of having a considerable amount of time taken up with meetings and issues in this building. And so, you know, it's, this is, this is better than last year where, where it was quite a challenge, but, but certainly not the level of attention, as I've detailed in the written report that I gave you a copy of as well, that, that I believe that I should be doing in this position. Individual meetings with senior staff, so there's a theme here, right? So it's the individual time with 15 direct reports, which is a lot. And again, one of the, one of the, one of the issues of the Collins Center work was really to look at that issue of numbers of direct reports and, and those kinds of things, and we're hopeful of getting some, some good recommendations back on that. Staff forums, I set out this year trying to do some of these. We're still trying to schedule them through May 5th so that we can provide staff with some information on the override. There may, may need to be, they may not be able to be school-specific, but we're trying to figure out a model where we can say, you know, almost in an office hour kind of a situation for staff that I'm available to talk with them about, about particularly the issues around the override. I will say, just on this one, around certain topics, materials fee, I mean, Ms. Stone, I think you know that from, from a couple of years ago, there's an active group that's interested in this. I've met regularly with that group of people around that program. They, they want to know what's going on, what they can do, what override study committee we're talking about, and those kinds of things. So I've been, been active meeting with them, but it's been more on that, on that level. And spending meaningful time in classrooms, I am very sorry to say for my own, Scotto, I know you and I've talked about this a lot, there's nothing that makes you more fulfilled, I think, in this position than being able to be in classrooms, and while, while I've spent some time, not nearly the amount of time that, that I set out to do in terms of these goals at the beginning of the year. So in student learning, you know, the implementation of the FY15 technology plan, I think, is a, is a success. I think you only need to read what you may see in the Sagamore, what you may hear from students, staff members who come before you, to know how this is changing practice, improving practice in our, in our schools. And so that's just year one of implementation. We learned a lot, I think, from that implementation. We learned a lot about staffing. We learned a lot about inventory. We learned a lot about getting things out in a timely fashion, all of those, those kinds of things, the governance issues that Kevin Stokes will talk about regularly. But, but overall, a very, very positive piece. And in particular, I want to mention here the work in special education that's led to the feedback that we've received off of the coordinated program review, where we were lacking in this area, considerably lacking, and have made some pretty significant improvements that got us some very positive feedback. The literacy initiatives, the elementary and, and high school. High school often gets forgotten in this conversation, but, but the initiatives there, led by Janey Ramos and others, have really improved the situation for students across departments, made the teaching of reading really a part of, of instruction at the high school. And while I talk about the fact that we've not been able to be as aggressive at the elementary level, the fact is that we've seen some very positive data. I think I cite in here one school in one particular grade span where we've implemented the program with fidelity. We've seen some really tremendous results, both in terms of our own anecdotal feedback and in terms of standardized testing feedback in those, in those grade spans. Program development, this is largely in special education. You know, we've been through this a number of times, so, but I, but I just will say, we, we set out a number of years ago believing that if we built programs in district, if we provided the right kinds of supports in district, that we could both control costs and improve program. And I believe that all of the data that we've looked at shows that we've accomplished both of those things. And I have, I've said to you before that accomplishing reducing costs while not improving program doesn't interest me. Right? And we've been able to do both, we think, and, and we continue to do that in terms of some of the proposals that you'll see with next year's spending plan. And we finished an ECS program review that I know is, is before you, that I have to say, in terms of the work that Amy Martin, that Dr. Fisher-Mueller have done on this, there's some, there's some really tremendous work that's gone into this. And now it's our job to talk with you more about it and to make sure that we have an implementation plan that can work. And to focus on the educational program and school renovation and addition projects. So here's the thing about goals, right? There are certain goals that you just want to stop and sort of grab onto and say, I'd like to talk about this for the next 20 minutes or so if I, if I could. I won't do that, but, but this is a big one for me because, you know, a lot of schools get built, unfortunately, without a lot of focus on what we're trying to actually do there. And it's very clear that in terms of devotion and the educational plan that Dr. Fisher-Mueller is largely responsible for, along with Joe Conley, and in terms of the work that's going on at the high school, that that's not how we're doing business here. We're building schools that serve students around a particular program that we're trying to achieve. And, and we're particularly proud of, of that. And I am particularly proud of having that listed in the goals and being able to talk with you for about it for a few minutes. So there is a challenge here. We're not where we wanted to be in terms of the strategic plan, metrics, and action plans. We're actually meeting in the middle of March to, to look at that and where we are and what we're going to be able to accomplish this year, but we're, we're not, you know, I will say that we've had to occupy much too much of Dr. Fisher-Mueller's time with things related to the other issues before us and, and not been as aggressive here as we, as we wanted to be. And, you know, we, we wanted to try to take what we've been able to accomplish and, and begin to boil that into a clear, concise vision. I hope that, that now that John Ritchie's doing some work with us, that we can get back to this, but it's, but we're not where we wanted to be by this time in terms of, of developing that. System priorities, I said to you in this document that we wanted to systematize educator evaluation. We've done some great work with Rebus and Associates around our, our people who evaluate and them looking at sharing practice across evaluators, and the feedback on that work has been tremendous. And we've seen improvements in terms of, of the work, the written work, the feedback that they're doing with teachers as a result. We're particularly proud that we, we are out there. We are way out there with respect to staff and community surveys. We're so far out there, it feels like sometimes that we're, that we're having to have conversations about what do we do next? Because as I've said to you before and will continue to say, this is difficult work and it's scary for principals. Right? And, and what we've tried to maintain a focus on in our conversations even up through this afternoon is that this is about improvement, that this is about baseline, this is not gotcha. No one's interested in playing whack-a-mole with you with these data. We're interested in you providing them to you, having you do work with staff, having them share you with your community, having you talk with your school improvement plan, your school council about them, develop action plans, let us find you support around particular areas. And that's where this can be really meaningful, and that's what we're, we're trying to achieve here. And there aren't many places in this Commonwealth that are doing any of this right now. Collective bargaining agreement, it's true that it's a one-year agreement, but we set out to work to make sure that we had an agreement. We do, we were able to do some work around the calendar and some other items that I know were important to all of you. They were certainly important to us, and we have that one-year agreement in place. Coordinated program review plan, as proud as I am of the, of the limited number of findings in that plan, I'm more proud of the work that we've done in terms of looking at some of the areas that we weren't doing as well in, translation and technology in special education, and the plans that we've developed off of that, some of which you'll see next week in our, in our budget proposals. We completed a search for successor for Mr. Rowe, the Deputy Superintendent for Administration and Finance, and are in the process of developing a transition plan, again, we lost the month of February, for, for Mary Ellen Dunn to, to begin doing some days here with us. We've, we've developed multi-year financial plans and scenarios. You have in front of you since October of 2013, a budget model, if you will, through the year 2022 that we can adjust, that we can look at, that we can use to take a look at future costs. I heard at the selectmen's meeting a number of weeks ago, when the chair made a comment about the length of time on this override and, and what might come after, we were able to go immediately to that document and say, look how the next three years are about the high school, how the enrollment begins to move there, and how in 19, 20, and 21, because we developed that model, we're actually able to, to, to take a look at some of those numbers. And the proposed 16 spending plans, which I just have to applaud the work of, of my senior staff, because they've done such tremendous work in, in, in putting together what goes far beyond what people are asked normally to do in terms of, of budgets. And I would say that with respect to the last two items, and this is not about your superintendent now, in terms of, of the senior staff that I, that I work with, it is, it amazes me on a regular basis how we've been able to keep up with the number of items listed here and in their goals that we've been able to meet all while working under two years, two years since the start of B-Space, of a significant amount of our time being devoted to those issues. And short-term space planning, we spend a lot of time, I think we have good short-term space plans around the Baker School, around Pierce School, around devotion school that we've been able to follow through on. You heard Mr. Rowe talk again about some of them tonight. We, we have a plan now for devotion. We have an outstanding principal at Old Lincoln School. We've been able to put some things in place that we think provide an outstanding experience for kids while that building is being renovated. Areas of challenge, so district-determined measures, we've been unable to move forward with the BEU on these issues. I will also say that there is some serious conversation at the state level going on right now about the future of DDMs and what that might look like. I believe they'll exist, but I believe the state is going to issue some, some different kinds of parameters that we may be able to take advantage of. So this may be one that in terms of listing it as an area of challenge, that I'll actually be happy that we were able to list it as an area of challenge. Student surveys, we've not been able to get to the point where we've been able to, to look at that issue yet. We have the staff, we have the community surveys. Hopefully for next year, I don't think it'll happen this year. Corey has actually forbid me from implementing it yet this year, that we'll be able to begin looking at, at some piloting of some, some potential student surveys. Data governance structure, again, in process, but not where I would necessarily want it to be, the work of Kevin Stokes and Scott Moore, and Corey's been, Corey Stott's been helping us quite a bit with, with that as well, in terms of the governance structure for moving forward with our, with our data and with our implementation of our technology planning. Learning management system, again, I hoped we'd be further along by now in terms of implementing an LMS at the high school and looking at what we might be able to do at, at least at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We still believe that we're going to be able to do that, do some of these things within, by the end of this calendar year, but I'd hope we'd be further along in our planning by now. And the administrative compensation study, I would, I had hoped we'd be, we'd be completed with that now. We are not. We're still on a timeline, we believe, for, for March, for the timelines that we laid out, but, but I'd hope we'd be further along. I will say that the work we've been able to do in terms of, of having John Ritchie do some work with us has been very helpful in a number of these regards, not the least of which is this. John's really writing herd, if you will, on the administration and compensation study work now and working with our consultants on, on, on that as well, and has been a great asset to our senior staff and our principals, both in areas like principals beginning to look at how they might share their results of their studies and, and the kinds of things they might be able to say. John's been a great asset to us in that area as well, so thank you for that. So just a brief update on where we are, again, what happens next. A review, the status update with the school committee chair and vice chair, if we ever actually get a meeting, which we haven't, which we haven't, which we haven't had enough of in February, being not here often enough.
Let the record reflect, Ms. Quinn, that the superintendent is asking for more meetings with his chair and vice chair, just, just so we're clear.
I did say that, did not.
Okay. On TV.
We propose any modifications to goals and timelines if necessary, and then review proposed changes with, with the school committee. I will say that, you know, for, you know, I'm, I'm disappointed with, in particular, that first area, because it's a priority for me. It's an area where I'd like to be able to be spending more time. I, I will say, I, I am counting on being able to do that after May. I am counting on being able to do that after, after May, to spend more time in buildings, more time with, with principals who I work with, and more time in classrooms, because as I've said to you before, I think it makes someone better in this position to be able to, to talk about what teachers are doing, to be able to see them implementing the things I stand here and talk with you about on a regular basis. And it makes the job more fun, and it should be fun. So happy to try to answer any questions. Thanks.
All right. So not only is this part of the new superintendent evaluation procedure to do a mid-year official presentation, so we are checking that box, but it's just a good opportunity to kind of sit back and say, here's what we thought was important last summer, here's what's been happening on it, here's where we are. So I think one thing, we could certainly open it up to questions now, if there are clarifying questions or, or observations. But I guess the other thing I would say is, after people have a chance to reflect on this, if they want to just contact me and Barbara directly with thoughts or reflections or observations, I mean, one of the conversations, that first bullet point, is to go back through here and say, wow, there's a lot that's happening, there's a lot that isn't happening. Is anything that's not happening so important that it needs to be happening? And if so, what else has to get rearranged to do it? And so, I mean, Bill probably has ideas on that. Each of you probably has ideas on that. So I think, ask questions now, let's have a conversation. But I would also say, just feel free to funnel reactions to the two of us, and then we will do these next steps and, and come back. Mr. Chen.
Bill, this is terrific. You know, obviously, I think this is a great mechanism to kind of get a mid-course check-in as to how things are progressing. So with regards to professional practice, when you say individual meeting with principals, so was your idea to have, by this point in time, met with all the principal at least once?
Oh, no. No, no, no. I actually spelled out in the original plan, and it's a differentiated plan. It depends on their number of years. It depends on their interim status. I mean, there's a number of, and it's spelled out every X number of weeks, every Y number of weeks. And so there have been some of those meetings. They've not, they've not, it's not met that, that timeline. But no, not once. Oh, my gosh, no, it's more than that.
Any other immediate thoughts or reflections? Okay. So what I'll say is, again, funnel ideas to Barbara or me, and we will try to aggregate them somehow and then go through this, and with the more. them somehow, and then go through this, and with the more, with the lens of what's the right way to spend time for the rest of the, for the rest of the year.
Thanks for the chance to do this.
Thank you. All right. That was the last item on our agenda. Is there any new business? There's never any new business. Okay. So seeing the fact that there is no new business, we will adjourn before 8:00 PM, I will note. Thank you.